Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. This meeting of the Planning Commission will begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as an advisory board to the City Council. It is the responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. Actions taken tonight on conditional use permits are final unless appealed to the City Council in writing within five days, and any actions taken tonight on final development plan, design, review, or minor amendments are final. Any recommendations made on preliminary subdivision plan requests tonight will be referred to the City Council for final actions at the third council meeting of this month, or at the first council meeting of next month if associated with a zoning or major amendment. Any recommendations made on rezoning requests, major amendments, future land use, amendments or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the first council meeting of next month. Council meetings are held at Carnegie Town Hall on our televised. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the Commission's consent agenda, planning staff in the Planning Commission apply the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the Shape Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Second, planning staff recommends approval of the request. Third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the Sioux Falls zoning ordinance. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed for each item. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on that item. Second, the petitioner or representative will be requested to come forward and make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner has spoken, anyone from the audience who wishes to address the agenda item shall be recognized. Then the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission move to the podium microphone and identify themselves for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask that you please either turn off or silence your electronic devices. This meeting is being telecast on CityLink and will be rebroadcast Friday at 7:00 p.m., Saturday at 10:00 a.m., and Wednesday at 1:00 a.m. Thank you for your cooperation.
Good evening and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall. I call to order this regular meeting of the City Planning Commission. At this time, the Planning Commission will approve the consent and regular agendas. The consent agenda items are, number one, approval of the January 9th, 2013 meetings of the regular meeting; two, Platts; three, is a major amendment to SubArea B Whispering Hills Plan Development District to change allowed uses at East 57th Street between South Bonson Avenue and South Greystone Avenue; four, is a conditional use permit in the O Office District and RD Residential District to allow a four-unit residential building at 4513 East 53rd Street; five, is a final development plan in SubArea B of the 69th Street and South Louise Avenue Plan Development District at 3721 West Avira Drive. Would there be any objections from anyone in the audience in regards to the consent Are there any objections from any of the Planning Commissioners regarding the consent agenda? If not, Chair would entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion. Would there be a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. If you were here for a consent agenda item, you are free to leave. You're more than welcome to stay for the regular meeting. We will now move on to the regular agenda, and I would like to just chat with everybody here about what's going to happen right now. Staff is going to put a presentation in regards to the new ordinance that the City has been working on for some time, and once they give that presentation, we'll open it up for comments from the audience. Jeff, before we do that, I've just been recommended already. I need a motion to approve the regular agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Jeff, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Planning Commission. Jeff Schmidt from the City Planning Staff and Sam Tbilcock from City Planning Staff, we're going to share this presentation this evening. Sam was the author to this and really facilitated majority of the discussion with the stakeholders and the stakeholder groups that put this together over the last two years. Over the last four years with Shape Places and Shape Sioux Falls, we've had four study groups, we've had at least 15 public meetings, and individual Planning Commission briefings, discussions, and City Council meetings to get to this point tonight. A majority of the people, I think, in the audience today, as well as you Planning Commissioners, have participated in this, and I want to take this time as well as really thank Sam Tbilcock for spending four years getting to this point. It was an incredible undertaking that we did in-house with our own staff, but it was a lot to do with the public citizens stepping forward and getting us to this point. What we heard, what they told us over the last four years is change the zoning ordinance. They wanted corrections to it, they wanted amendments to it to make Sioux Falls a much better place. They wanted residential residential. They didn't want us to have to have people go to meetings if they didn't have meaningful input. They wanted to make commercial about the size, and they wanted to allow the zoning districts to reflect that market. So, based upon that, a lot of things really aren't going to change, okay? The zoning ordinance does continue to provide, the zoning districts, as everybody still remembers them, residential districts, commercial districts, RS is where the single family's at, C2 is a standard commercial district. Now, forms is the new aspect that we've created. That takes all of these standards and puts them into one category, and then there's different types of forms. We also have the standard typical land uses that everybody's used to. So districts and land uses are still there, as well as the standards that everybody knows, setbacks, parkings, and landscaping. Oh, this one's mine, then you go. Sorry. We changed the ordinance again. The main thing that we've heard is protect those single-family neighborhoods, make residential residential. So we've had primarily these residential areas be residential. We've eliminated significantly decreasing the conditional uses. Planning Commission citizens in this area continue to stress to us, why are we coming to these public meetings and talking about things that when residential should be residential? That was a critical thing that we got into this ordinance, okay? There are still two main land uses that are allowed in a single-family neighborhood, that being places of worship and elementary schools. All other things that aren't primarily single-family got moved out, and you'd have to zone that into another zoning classification, such as in the past nursing homes and group homes.
Now, the illustration that we have up in front of you here up on the presentation shows, what we try to show is a zoning interface. It's up on the website. It's really kind of a summary of the zoning ordinance, or as I like to talk to people about it, is a way to interface into the zoning ordinance. As Jeff talked about, we have a number of forms, and this shows you one example of one of our forms. It's available in a number of different zoning districts. Really, this form was already available in the current zoning ordinance. We just don't package it and explain it to people this way. We don't illustrate it to people this way. This is one of our goals, is trying to make the zoning ordinance much more user-friendly, and it provides a way to really funnel people into the ordinance and interface them into that ordinance. So you can see all the standards are on one page. If you don't know, if you want to get more into the specifics, you'll be able to click right into the ordinance or know exactly where it's at. Right now, you have to look in several different places. This will take you into the place that you need to see it. So we think that's a really big improvement. People are interested in knowing how that works, but certainly all that information is right there for you.
So the next section that we heard the public asked us to do is in regards to public involvement, really the participation at Planning Commission City Council. We've reduced those automatic conditional uses where the land uses were allowed, but with conditions. So that was a confusing thing for the public where they said, "But if we're opposed to it, how do we get it denied?" Well, they didn't. They just had to add conditions, and the developer, that business owner, was saying, "Well, I thought we could move forward." No, you can't because there's still conditions. So we've removed those confusion issues and just basically allowed zoning to really set the course. Zoning is what matters at this point. There are permitted special standards. We've set this in the zoning aspect that says there's going to be separation distance from, again, protecting those residential districts. There's a 250-foot spacing distance, a 500-foot, and a 1,000-foot. So land uses are separated from the single-family neighborhoods. Again, we've clarified standards, we've added buffer yards. In the past, when you did negotiate those conditions, it came down to how much landscaping it was. Sometimes it was 50 feet, sometimes it was 25 feet, sometimes it was how many trees. Well, now those standards are put in the buffer yards. Everybody knows what rules they're playing by.
I get to make one point, too. Just to make sure that you also understand, when he's talking about this operation distance, it's not necessarily all the uses, it's some of the uses that we found, and you found such things as on-sale alcohol. It's not all commercial uses. It's auto-oriented uses and things like that that we feel like needs, like a car wash would need to be further away from the residential areas. Otherwise, in some cases, we have the buffer yards that can be anywhere from 15 to 30 feet that will help in that area, too. So again, it kind of depends on the use. So getting it, and that kind of leads into the buffer yards. We have really about three different types of buffer yards. Actually, we have four, but really the three that show up here include the different kinds of berm's, and it's going to be based upon the compatibility of the different uses adjacent to each other. So you have the 15-foot buffer yard, which would have a 2-foot berm. Again, that would be something in the vicinity of like an office building next to single-family residential would have a 15-foot buffer yard. There would be some landscaping units required. As you got to the 30-foot buffer yard, that would be like a larger apartment, 48-unit apartment with three stories would have a 30-foot buffer yard, 4-foot berm, again, some additional landscape units. 45 feet would be some of your larger commercial or possibly light industrial would be 45 feet away. That's getting it to be in the 6-foot berm area. So we, again, we look at the compatibility, much as we looked at the compatibility chart that you guys are already working on through Shape Sioux Falls and brought that in with the buffer yards. Separation distances. Yeah, the separation distances, this starts to show you as Jeff was talking about it, even brings up the on-sale alcohol establishments. If you do have some of those different, you know, we want to make sure that there is a separation. So on-sale alcohol, for example, if that's within a certain distance, I think in this case it's 500 feet, if residential was within that area, it would move it to a conditional use. So then, in those cases, certainly the neighborhood would have more of a say in those situations. So we are, with some of the heavier uses that would typically be of concern to the public, have brought that forward and continue to. I think there was some concern that neighborhood wouldn't be heard on some of these issues, and we're still making that and bringing that forward.
So then in regards to non-residential, we had the residential issues that we tried to address. We addressed the public involvement, and then in regards to non-residential, specifically commercial. In the past, the commercial issue was the size. What's the size of the structure? So in commercial, we generally have two types of standards. The retail's either general retail or motor vehicle-related retail. The commercial districts in the past, when people came in, we pushed them into C4. That was the general commercial district that we had, C4. Everybody moved to C4. Now it's based upon the size. C2, C3, and C4 gradate up. If it's C2, you can build a structure up to 25,000 square feet. If it's C3, you can be up to 75,000 square feet, and if it's C4, it's unlimited size. So that zoning really needs to matter, okay? The public understands it, the developer understands it and goes, "Okay, so if I'm C3, I can build a retail store up to 75,000 square feet." That's correct. The property owners are all going to understand what their zoning means. Also, in the past, there was this misunderstanding or there was this misuse in the market where you couldn't do commercial and industrial. That's the way the laws were written. Well, now we can have certain forms, certain retail uses in an industrial district. This goes back to what Sam did back in Shape Places when we adopted this in 2009. We laid out the intersections based upon the types of roadway network we had. We described each one of those intersections as a regional, subregional, or maybe even a neighborhood employment node, and each one of those employment nodes then had a zoning classification with it. Planning Commission understands this. This is what we adopted in 2009, and we started to say, "And the zoning is going to correspond to this comprehensive plan." But we didn't have the zoning in place yet. Now we do have the zoning in place.
Kind of getting to some examples of, you know, how this would work. You can start to see, you know, this is at the intersection, a couple of different intersections, how we've started to lay in the new zoning for commercial districts. This is at 69th and Minnesota, and you could see that we've generally shown that there's some commercial here that will fit in, such as what you see in front of you, which is on the bottom there is a subway, and that fits in very well with the C2. Buildings are less than 25,000 square feet and would fit into that area. Now, you get into the one on the right-hand side, that's the C4. Well, what are you going to see with C4? You're going to see the larger retail, what we call more of the RE5 form, and those forms are your big boxes, your malls, and in those areas, again, the public would know what to expect in C4. You're going to see the larger retail. Whereas if you're in the C2 areas, you know you're going to see smaller neighborhood-style commercial. And so that's just kind of an example of that.
So then the last, kind of, the four highlights of things that we've heard from the public, address today's new market. Not only do we think we addressed today's new market, but we built in the flexibility and the aspects to change with an ever-changing market. Mixed use is an option in the bottom left-hand corner. It's not for everybody, but could you do mixed use? In the past, you couldn't. Now that's a standard that you can move towards. The core neighborhood, we got more suburban, and traditional lots didn't always work. You couldn't meet today's standards, so Sam created traditional residential lots. There's higher density options there where they can still stay within their existing residential lots, but stay on their property. So traditional residential lots, RT1, was allowed. We converted to PUDs, Planned Unit Developments, instead of PDs, and the 280 planned developments that we had out there got changed to conventional zoning districts. That's something that really will help not only the public, but the developers. And there's also the ability to do an alternative site plan that comes forward to a public Then, in summary, the one issue that's still outstanding that people want to talk about of all the things that we've changed in the zoning ordinance is the signage. We have, on the left-hand side, what's currently not allowed, signs are not allowed in the boulevard, in the public right-of-way, and that's what's in, not only the existing code right now, but that's what's in the proposals that moves forward. On the right-hand side is what's being proposed in new Shape Places, is that yard signs would be allowed. So that's the proposal. And I think there's one more sign. So again, in regards to these types of signs, what's still allowed in what's existing today and moving forward is construction signs would still be allowed, as well as for sale, for lease signs. All of these signs are being allowed in Shape Places because they're not in the public right-of-way. That's where we kind of made the conclusion, is signs on private property, but not in the public right-of-way.
We certainly are still taking comments on this, and in fact, we took comments today, and we continue to do that. The comments that we're receiving right now, we believe we're addressing. I know there's probably people that may even talk tonight that have some suggestions. We'll continue to take, of course, those suggestions tonight as you guys listen, too. I did hand out, and this is something that will be on the internet for the next draft, is anything that we're changing from this date forward, we'll show exactly what's, whether or not it's the zoning map that's changing or anything that's changing in the ordinance, we'll show you what's actually changing, and we'll show it in the draft ordinance, too. It'll be in yellow highlights. So we want to make sure that we're showing that information because, of course, at this point, you know, people have seen it, and now they're going, "Okay, what's changing?" They want to know that. And so we'll continue to do that, and we think that's important from this point forward. And the next draft would come out, if there's a recommendation at this time that comes from you, the Planning Commission would come out, I think, next Monday, next Monday or Tuesday. So with that, you would start to see this document with that. With that, we'll take any questions and, of course, any comments.
Commissioners, would you have any questions with these two? Let's start with Meredith. He had his hand up first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know this has taken quite a long time. The last ordinance was put in place in 1983, I believe, and I participated in a lot, not a lot, but some of the meetings for Shape Sioux Falls and then some of the ordinance reviews. And I know over the years that there have been a number of items that the staff has had a struggle with in terms of just how to deal with them as they moved to the Planning Commission, and I know there have been a number of occasions over the years where we've had a struggle, too, as commissioners. Based on what I've seen and what I know of this ordinance, once, I believe, once the public gets to understand how this new form-based zoning code, zoning ordinance works, and some of the things that allow the flexibility, I know in the past we've been stuck on some items where, had we been able to be more flexible, I believe, much better solutions or resolutions would have come forward. So I'm really pleased that this has all come about in four short years. It's a lot of work, and I sincerely believe that the public will, once they understand this, benefit as well. So thank you for all the hard work.
Meredith, I would second everything that you have said. I know for many of you in this room, it probably hasn't happened fast enough, but it's a very complex, multi-layered ordinance, and to basically throw it up all in the air and find how all the pieces fit in, I'm grateful that we were able to do it inside our own team and that we didn't have to pay a consultant to do it, and if there's economic forces that allow that to happen, we're to a great place today, I think. It's not perfect, as nothing is, but hopefully, 20 years from now, we still think there's some useful life to this document. So again, I know, I just want to thank so many of you in the audience who spent countless hours in meetings, some with me, some with Meredith, some with other commissioners, certainly with Sam and Jeff. Sometimes contentious conversations, but I think ultimately, we all want what's best for Sioux Falls. Every day, every week, every month, we hear about something great that's going to happen in Sioux Falls, and it's because of people, stakeholders, volunteers, commissioners, that are willing to take the time to volunteer their time to make Sioux Falls a better place. So certainly my thanks to all of you in the audience that didn't need to be on any of those committees. But I do have one question. You addressed churches and elementary schools in residential, which often cause questions. Daycares cause questions in residential. Can you address that item specifically, Sam?
The daycares actually are, well, are you talking about daycare centers or family?
Residential, family daycares.
There really was no change in the ordinance for that because it's, we consider it an accessory to a single-family residential dwelling. So we didn't make any changes to that.
So do they, so it's a permitted, obviously?
It's permitted special.
Okay.
It still has some of the standards that are attached now. There's still the requirements that are really the same. I don't think we made any change at all.
So conditional use is required?
What's that?
A conditional use?
Is not required unless they don't, there's some things, if they don't meet some of the standards, of course, then they would have to go to conditional use, just as they do now.
Perfect. So that's the big change. Not every family daycare over a certain size will have to come.
Well, no, it'd be the same. It's the same as it is now.
Seven to 12.
Yeah, seven to 12 children. What they, I think it happens a lot of times, if they're able to get, tell me if I'm wrong, please step up, but if they can't get the petition signed by the neighboring landowners, then it has to go to conditional use. If they are, they can just move forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Jeff, Sam, tell me a little bit about the process, and when I look through all the chapters in this, I was on one of the committees, which happened to be the fence committee. I never knew there were so many things to consider regarding a fence till I got on that committee. How many citizens groups were there that worked on this? There was one for fences. Was there one for landscaping?
Yes, there was one for landscaping. There was one for zoning districts. There was one for signage. There was one for parking. There was one for corridors. So there was a number of different groups.
There's your slide right there.
Yeah, and here, this one shows all the public involvement activities since we started the zoning study groups, landscape, parking, signage, zoning district study group. There was one from Minnesota Avenue that we're not showing here, too, on corridors. The fences isn't even shown here because this was actually, came up two years ago and was finished two years ago before we even started the zoning. So that's really included, too, beyond that.
With the citizens group, was it a pretty open type of format? Here's what we've got, let's look at it.
Yeah, you know, I mean, these were stakeholder groups, and we tried to bring a good cross-section of people together in all the different groups, not like-minded people. We wanted to bring people together that really had different views. But through this process, beyond this, what you see up here, take a step back because we're still talking about Shape Sioux Falls and the comprehensive plan and how important that was. That's where you got the broad cross-section of the community, the visual listening survey. That was what was done and finished up in 2009. We spent a lot of time in need to, to make sure that that is consistent. This zoning ordinance is consistent with that, and I think if, a lot of people I've heard, just even today as we're coming through the open house, talking about, "I remember seeing this in Shape Sioux Falls and you guys followed through with it. I remember you talking about this and here it is." So what we did during that process and all those meetings, that's a totally different public involvement process, go back to that, and there's probably twice as many meetings as you saw up here for that, and we really got everybody involved with that.
When you talk about changes still taking place and being able to take place, is that in response to questions, is that in response to people's involvement, or is that some technical things you guys are catching?
Yeah, there's a lot of different things. I think most of the things that you're seeing on the zoning map changes that you'll see in the next draft are just comments coming forward that we hear from people saying, you know, "You missed this," or "What about this? It really should be that," and we'll follow through with those. The ordinance, some of our comments that we received, others are, like you talked about, the technical things that zoning staff and planning staff are catching and want to make sure it works better.
And that process will continue till when? Till it goes to the City Council, and once it's acted on at the City Council, then it becomes an ordinance?
Right. Again, what our plan would be to Right. Again, what our plan would be to continue showing those changes, anything that we move forward at this point in time, though.
Thank you, Sam. There be any other questions for Jeff or Sam?
Mr. Chair, I just have a comment. I'm a relatively new member of the Planning Commission, only a couple of years. And versus having to read the 400 pages of code, I really appreciate the new interface and the way to click through and figure out those things because the code put me to sleep a lot of nights. So thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? If not, thank you, fellows. This is the time when we open it up to the audience. But I'm going to do this just a little bit different tonight. I think there's a number of people here that want to address and talk about a particular thing in the ordinance. This is a huge ordinance. And I think there might be some other people that have served on some of the committees that might want to address other parts of the ordinance. We will get to the signs. But I think what I'd like to request first, if there's someone in the audience that would like to address any part of this ordinance that Jeff and Sam presented to us this evening, if you'd be good enough to come up to the microphone and identify yourself, we'd like to hear what you have to say.
Good evening. My name is Lanny Oringer. First of all, I agree, and I'd like to commend Jeff and Sam for the work that they've done in this zoning manual. I am an architect. I'm involved in development on a daily basis, and I see where this is going to hopefully make my job a little bit easier when we have to come and visit, or maybe not have to come and visit the Planning Commission on an as often basis. I have two concerns, though, with the way the thing was put together. One of them is somewhat broad and one is very specific. The very first thing that I'll talk about is what I'll call broad. And that is the, and I'm going to talk specifically about the zoning of commercial property. The way that the parcels that were previously C4, and I'm going to speak specifically of parcels that are specifically C4 previously that are being changed either to C2 or to C3, and the method that property owners were made aware of the changes that are being proposed to their property. My understanding is, if you get a water bill, you got to notice in your water bill that there were some changes happening with the zoning ordinance. Nothing specific didn't say your piece of property is being changed from X to Y or anything to that nature. There's evidently also been some postings in the Argus Leader. Not everybody subscribes to the Argus Leader. There's also been some things on the internet. Not everybody has the internet. There's some absentee owners, maybe, that don't even live in the Sioux Falls community that may own property that may not even be aware that the property that they own now potentially could be being downzoned and have an impact on the value of their property. That's the broad concern first and foremost. Second concern is very specific to a parcel of property. I'm here representing the property owner of 60, the northeast corner of 69th and Cliff Avenue. Very controversial piece of property over the past year. Zone C4 currently. Over the past two years, and I'm going to refer to my notes here because I've put some together here. Over the past two years, or maybe it's two and a half years now, that piece of property has been brought up as a conditional use item. It has been recommended by the staff and it's been approved by the Planning Commission to have a use of in excess of 100,000 square feet. Twice that's happened in the past two years. It's a parcel that's approximately 17 and a half acres, very large piece of property. And like I said, currently zone C4. And what's showing up on the proposed map is that it be downzoned to C2. Limit the size of any building that's on there to 25,000 square feet. As Sam showed you when he went through the slides, a C2 parcel would be a strip mall. Has a subway in it. It might have a dentist's office. It may have an insurance company in it. It could be up to 25,000 square feet. But on a parcel of 17.5 acres, nearly 900,000 square feet, a 25,000 square foot building is pretty small. Even if that means you can put 10 of them on there, it's pretty small. I went through the proposed zoning ordinance, and I have a list of 10 properties that are being proposed as change from C2 to either C3 or C4 that are of similar size to this parcel. Both existing properties and new, or excuse me, vacant properties. And I'm going to read through these, and you can listen to the size of the buildings that are on here in relationship to the size of the parcel, and it gives you a little bit of idea where I think that this parcel at the northeast corner of 69th and Cliff Avenue needs to be considered something other than C2 for the sake of the property owner.
Lanny, can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
Have you discussed this with Sam and Jeff?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
I've had numerous discussions with them.
And I just want to clarify, you had the support of the Planning Commission?
Absolutely.
You didn't have the support of the commission, unfortunately, which is out of our control on this. So I don't disagree with what you're saying. And I think maybe we need to have some further conversations with regard to some particular properties.
Right, right. And that's what I said, Jesse, is you guys, the staff approved that stuff previously. You guys approved it previously. Something said back then that it was okay, but now I don't understand why it's not okay anymore. Southwest corner of 57th and Cliff Avenue. It's approximately 4.85 acres. This is the property. It's 4.5 acres. The building on there is 47,000 square feet. It's being proposed as a C3. Again, 4.5 acres at C3 with a 47,000 square foot building, that's the Hy-Vee at 57th and Cliff. That's not a big building, if you look at it, in relationship to what we're calling big boxes. But a C2 wouldn't allow that. I wouldn't be able to go to my property owner and say, let's build a small Hy-Vee. Let's build a fairway grocery store. Let's build something small there on your nearly 18 acres because I'm limited to 25,000 square feet. The northwest corner of 57th and Louise, approximately seven acres.
Lanny, how many properties? Did you have a list there?
I've got 10 of them.
I think rather than go through all 10 of those, I think we're getting your point. Why don't you kind of finish up, and we'll have Jeff come up and kind of bring everybody up to date with your particular corner and what their thought process is on making that a C2 versus a C4?
Absolutely. I appreciate that, Ken. I guess what I ask is for your consideration to, for this particular piece of property, to consider making it a C4. That's what has been, it's been approved for. That's what the property has been valued at by the person that owns it, et cetera. And to change it from that at this point, we'll have some serious ramifications.
Lanny, I think if that is a Zone C2, you have the opportunity to come back in and ask for a rezone on that.
Absolutely. We do, Ken. You've seen what happened when we tried to get a conditional use, or actually, it was a rezone through the city council previously in that particular parcel. Very, very difficult. It really would not happen.
We hear you. I feel your pain. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jeff, would you mind coming up just for a second and helping us with Lanny here? Could you tell everybody that's watching in here the history of that particular corner so they can get, know what we're talking about?
Yeah, and again, Jesse brings up a good point that Lanny did talk to me about this today. And so I was able to put together a couple of slides to really try to explain where we're coming at from commercial. When we looked at the commercial locations, we, Sam, okay, but I had to look at them also. We looked at all the locations in the city of Sioux Falls. These were the bullet points, okay? The comprehensive plan, our Shapes Sioux Falls has employment notes. We looked at those. Was it a regional center, C4, or was it a neighborhood center, C2? This was a neighborhood center. Where's your access point? If it was set back this far and you had a 300-foot access point or a quarter-mile access point, C4 versus C2. What's the existing structure size? Up to 25,000 square feet. It's a vacant lot. There are no structures. You got C2. If you had an existing structure of 47,000 square feet, you had an existing structure. We did not make you legal non-conforming. We gave you the C3 because you had an existing structure. Then we looked at what the adjacent districts were. What's the compatibility? Was it next to a single-family? Were there transitions? And then commercial classification. That's when then we decided in the end, C2, C3, C4. Sam had to do that for all commercial districts throughout the entire city of Sioux Falls. We won't say, hey, we got them all absolutely perfect. This is the opportunity, as well as at city council, for someone to come up here and say, we believe you made a mistake. And they should point it out and say, this corner, whatever corner it may be, demands to be or should be, and we would correct it and change it. But as I told Lanny, that's not something that I feel comfortable just saying, yeah, we agree with you. We're just going to wholeheartedly change it and not go with our checklist. We believe the northeast corner of 69th and Cliff should be C2 based upon these points.
The size of the property is such, Jeff. What's his recourse at this point? If he does not agree with your zoning on that, are we his only recourse?
No, city council. Right now, I mean, in March 5th, if this goes forward to city council, he can have the same discussion March 5th at city council, and they can amend it. As well as, he can still go forward as you recommended. He can go forward in a month, six months, two years, and request a rezoning of that property.
Would not need to have something definite in mind for that corner to ask for a rezone.
No. No, zoning matters.
I think there's.
Whatever he wants to do at that property, he could come and say, I want to build that C2, C3, C4, and he'd just zone the property.
If I remember correctly, the last time, I think, there was a petition signed by that neighborhood, I think there was over 1,600 signatures as far as what was planned there. And I suspect that some of your sensitivity is part of the history of that particular.
This is our sensitivity right here.
All right, okay. Jeff, thank you. I hope that helps. Lanny, I hope that helps you a little bit. Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission? Mr. Dempster, I suspect you were on one of these committees, I bet.
Spencer Ruff, though, but.
Spencer Ruff, I apologize.
Dick's a wonderful architect, and so it's a compliment. Listen, I don't remember who I am some days, so that's okay. Spencer Ruff, I'm an architect here in town. I've lived in Sioux Falls the majority of my architectural career. And as with Meredith, I, you know, I started in at about 1984 with the existing zoning ordinance and have done many projects in the city of Sioux Falls. I would just like to say that I enthusiastically support Shape Places. I think it is a wonderful ordinance. And I can say that because in the last two months, I've opportunity to design two projects that use the concepts contained in Shapes Sioux Falls. One is a small office complex of about five acres. It's presently zoned office. And I looked at the present zoning, and I looked at Shape Places and can find no detriment to my client. We can do everything under Shape Places as we've done, as we could do under the existing ordinance. The other is a project on the west side of town called Cherry Lake Reserve, which is a much larger project. It is on land that Jim Suker owns. And I've been really waiting about 15 years to have an ordinance that allows us to do something like this. And picking up, I think, Nick, on what you've said is, three, four years ago, I designed Hazelteen, which is on the northeast, northwest part of Sioux Falls. And frankly, it was a nightmare for myself and the staff and the Planning Commission because what we wanted to do, we really couldn't do. But we made it happen in some miraculous way. And it was confusing and time-consuming. Under the proposed new ordinance, that would be what's called a pedestrian-orientated PUD, which still has all the involvement of citizen input and all of the processes. But the PUD now clearly defines and allows us to achieve what we've been trying to achieve in some of these mixed-use developments. I would honestly say that when I first looked at it, I thought, oh, I'll never understand this. It was so new to me in a way, but in reality, wasn't new because I've seen ordinances like this in other states and other projects that I've worked on, such as in Fargo, North Dakota, and out in California and in Colorado. It was put together in a different way. And really, I think it's probably equal to or superior to any zoning ordinance that I've ever seen. And I commend the staff and the citizens because it is an astounding document. It's easy to use. Now, I say that, it took me about a day to understand this interface concept. And once I did, it was completely intuitive. I also am a visually-orientated person. I'm an architect. That's the way we were born. And the illustrations that are contained within all of these forms will help everybody understand the concepts. It's just not words. It's illustrations, photographs, and drawings. And I think for the so-called layperson, for the Planning Commission, for the city council, and for real estate developers, that it is just going to be so much easier to understand it. But the thing that I alluded to before that really excites me is that it creates new design options for people like myself, which are the Village PUD, the Downtown PUD, and the Pedestrian Orientated PUD. Cherry Lake Reserve uses the Pedestrian Orientated PUD. I thought until I sat down with Sam that it was a Village PUD. And he looked at me, and he said, no, Spence, it's a pedestrian-oriented PUD. And he walked me through it to where I could understand where it'd be far more beneficial to my clients to use it. So I won't go on and on because I could, but I am thrilled. I'm ecstatic. I'm enthusiastic. I almost wish I were 30 years old again and had another 20 years to design. But you brought fresh life to this old warrior. And I just really hope that the citizens of this community will support it. And it isn't perfect, Jesse, as you said. Nothing is. I'm not. Nothing is perfect. But it is 98% perfect. And the last 2% will come about being improved in probably six to 12 months as more projects come forward and are designed and where they'll have ideas and thoughts that nobody else could see. So I just, I thank you for the opportunity to support this document.
Spencer, thank you. Those are some awfully nice comments. I'm close to perfect, as you've seen tonight. I forgot your name, but other than that.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mary Glensky. I live at 632 West 9th Street, which is in the Cathedral Historic District. And I just wanted to thank Mike Cooper and particularly to thank Sam Treblecock for the efforts they made to help us preserve our historic district in this new zoning process. When we became listed in 2010 as one of the 10 best neighborhoods in the country, one of the criteria that they used and that they commented on was the very many distinctive Victorian homes and the efforts to preserve the historic character of the neighborhood. And I've visited them quite a bit about zoning in our area because we had the past history before we became a historic district of losing some of our old homes being torn down and the areas turned into apartments because at that time, the whole part of the north end was zoned for apartments. And where the city at that time downzoned our historic district, and that helped to save those historic structures. And the new zoning does exactly that, and we do appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Scott Richardson. I'm from the corporate office of Simon, the owner, of the Empire Mall. And I've gotten the opportunity to meet Jeff for the first time tonight. But we've had multiple conversations on the phone. And I, too, am a huge supporter of what has been presented this evening. As a developer for properties all across the country, to have a community that is proactive and is taking the initiative to, what's the word? To outline the rules as opposed to just, you have a project, you go in, and all of a sudden, you spend six to nine months with the Planning Commission. And every time you think you get there, there's a new condition and everything. It's so nice to know the zoning's in place, you've got a project, you understand the rules, you can get it done. It speeds up everything. So from our standpoint, this is an extremely good thing.
Scott, thank you for coming down tonight. Welcome to our town.
It's my pleasure. I hope to do a lot of good things here.
Good.
Well, thank you because you let Dennis spend a lot of time sitting in a lot of committee meetings to help get us to this point, so. meetings to help get us to this point, so.
Is there anyone else that would have a, oh, here we go. This looks like a landscaper to me.
Something like that. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Chad Cucker. I'm a landscape architect with Confluence, and I've been working in Sioux Falls in site planning and design since nineteen ninety-eight. I've worked with the ordinance quite extensively, and I spent six years on the Board of Adjustment, many times dealing with the same cases over and over and over again. And actually, I've been involved in this process. In 2004, I found a letter today where I first wrote a letter to then-chairman Ben Veldheisen and Steve Metley about requesting some changes to the ordinance. And I'm really glad that Mr. Cooper, you know, took that on after Metley's retirement and went through this process. And I can't, you know, thank, you know, Sam and Steve and Jeff enough for all the work that they've put into this. I think it's great. They've done a great job of soliciting public input and responding to comments. You know, I think everybody agrees that the existing ordinance was outdated. I looked at the population of Sioux Falls, it nearly doubled in the time that that ordinance was in place, from nineteen eighty-three to the current time. And since then, there's been a lot of change in developer needs and also changes in the, you know, philosophies of community planning. So, I think it's quite obvious that it's time for an update. You know, people were using the planned development district as a way to make the ordinance meet their needs, and two-hundred-and-ninety planned development districts is just a little bit extensive. So, anyway, in summary, I guess, you know, thank you again for all of your time in this process. I think this ordinance is a great fit for Sioux Falls. It, you know, allows for lots of flexibility in development. It makes it easier, fewer conditional uses, and, you know, certainly reduces, hopefully, the number of cases you have to see and the Board of Adjustment has to see. If there were one thing that, you know, I'd recommend you look at a little bit further is the downtown design review district, to try to get a little bit more teeth in that to continue to encourage the development we've seen downtown over the past year, ten years, that I think has really supported some of the revitalization downtown. Okay, thank you for your time.
Chad, what committee were you on?
I was on a couple different landscape study groups.
I think you and I on the fence committee, awesome.
In the fence one, and then I was also involved in many of the stakeholder meetings throughout this process as well.
Should be thanking you. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
My name is Ron Nelson. I'm a commercial real estate broker, and I've been doing this for twenty-five years. And I also served on the Board of Adjustment for eight years. And doing this as long as I have, you feel like you should have a pretty good understanding of things, and I can't tell you how many times we felt like we got broadsided by a surprise that we just didn't anticipate. And it always frustrated me that, gee, I should understand this better. I've always tried to work closely with the planning staff and have had a wonderful relationship. But I've participated in these committees as well. And the one thing that I think makes this town great is the participation that they offer and encourage from the people that are in the trenches doing this. You know, it's one thing for bureaucrats to sit in their office and concoct the strategies that they think they want to do. I just returned last week from a national conference in Florida with some peers and in discussions with some folks from Washington, D.C. I was talking about this that we're doing here, and they said, "Wow, that's amazing." It takes us, on average, about six years to get a project from beginning to completion. So, you don't know how you got it here in Sioux Falls. And so, it's appreciative when you hear things, and it helps you, you know, just recognize sometimes things we might take for granted. So, I too want to affirm the efforts of Sam and the planning department of working on all this together. And I just kind of wanted to give you a field report from somebody that's participated in the committees, that they did a great job of outreach to people in the business. And it's people that are doing this that were participating. And Sam, in his very low-key style, I think, did a great job of reaching out and seeking input and not just saying, "Here's what we've got," you know, "but here's what we've put together, what are your thoughts?" And, you know, I think oftentimes, there was contrary input to what the city was thinking. And you'd come back at the next meeting, and you could see where those ideas have been incorporated. And I just appreciated that, again, because they are listening to the people that are doing it. And that is, I think, just a really neat thing. I'll give you an example that I just had with Jeff. I don't know if he'd even remember this conversation, but I'm involved in kind of a larger, high-profile, about a fifteen-acre project that we're just trying to assess the landscape as to what we have in front of us. And I called Jeff, and I said, "Well, it's over an acre, so I know under the old ways of doing things, we'd automatically have to come in for a conditional use. The use is something that would also trigger a conditional use." I laid out the entire plan for it. I said, "This will probably come in after the new rules are in effect. What am I missing? What is it that we need to do?" And Jeff said, "Ron, you're good." And a big smile on my face. But that just means that I think, you know, and as he explained, it is really a very redundant exercise, you know, to go through over and over, taking their time, taking your time for things that really, there should be no controversy or no issue with. And so, I just think this is going to make this city, as we advance to the next tier as a larger city with a lot more on our plate, an exciting place to live and know that we are doing a very well-thought-out and very intelligent development, but doing it in a very efficient manner. And so, again, my kudos to the planning commission, and I just encourage and appreciate your support.
You'd better be careful, their level, I asked for a raise here before they know it.
I know it.
The evening's over. Ron, thank you for those comments. Is there anyone else that had any comment they'd like to make in regards to the zoning ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, commission members, for the record, George Hahn. I'm a lifelong resident of Sioux Falls, and this is the evolution of a journey that began in nineteen seventy-four with the election of Rick Noby and his hire of Steve Metley. And it took eight or nine years to get a zoning ordinance thirty years ago that served us very, very well. In that era, Sioux Falls was smaller than Sioux City. Sioux City hasn't changed. We're now twice the size of Sioux City. We've been through an era where we struggled, we sweated, we appeared before Boards of Adjustment, Planning and Zoning Commissions, City Hall. We got the job done in rate of state development construction. I've had that in my blood for my entire adult life. This is what has evolved, and it's a wonderful plan. I've had some backdoor access to most everything going on. But it started nearly forty years ago, and it's now a better, simpler community in which to grow and develop. And Sioux City is still where it was forty years ago. Wonderful step forward, and I want to compliment Planning and Zoning. I've been at their desk for forty years. I've never had a request go unanswered, a question pushed aside, or calls not returned or information not provided. This is a wonderful plan, and I so wholeheartedly encourage its adoption.
Thank you, George. Appreciate those comments. Having said that, let's open it up to whoever would like to address the commission tonight. Why don't you come on up?
I'm Kevin Zomerman. I am the president of the Home Builders Association, and the amendment that we're putting forward, I think, should have been submitted to you, Kenny. Did you receive it?
I think we did, yes.
Okay. So, if that's in front of you, it's probably better that you read that and-
Do you have a copy of it with you?
Uh, yeah, we have that copy, right?
Kevin, I think to be fair to the folks listening in and some of the people sitting here tonight that might not be aware of, if we could put it up, if you could just quickly highlight it or read a little bit of it so folks know what we're talking about, I'd really appreciate it.
Um, well, you know, as you look up on the overhead, the, what came out in the January twenty-four in the provisions is that the temporary boulevard signs had been removed according to comments based on the public. And, you know, as a member of the Home Builders Association and the president, and we work side-by-side with the RACE, the Realtors Association, we're opposed to this because we feel it really improves the definition and provides greater clarity and guidance, you know, to the boulevard directional signs under certain conditions. We found this out after January twenty-four, and before that, it had been in there that conditional uses were available. The amendment that we're putting forward is based on the City of Fargo Sign Code, which allows directional signs for garage sales and real estate, open houses, and prohibits all other signs in the right-of-way. And I'll add to that by saying that the sign that the Home Builders Association is pushing for is our parade of homes sign that we direct people to our houses that way. The HBA believes that the amendment that we're offering is real, is fair and it's reasonable approach for regulating the placement of the signs in the boulevard under, you know, specific conditions, just like we do with other types of signs allowable in the city. For Realtors and Home Builders, these signs play an integral part of marketing and selling the homes to consumers as well as stimulating our local economy. This is especially true in newly-developed areas, which may not appear on web mapping and service applications and technology providers such as Google Maps, Bing, or other GPS mapping devices. You know, what we found is a lot of these new streets that we're trying to direct open houses to is that you can't even find them on Google and stuff like that. The boulevard directional signs provided, you know, a service to the community for special events like our open houses for the Realtors and then the parade of homes for the builders. And this, it draws a lot of people, you know, not only from our city, but there's a lot of people from, you know, the surrounding states and, or surrounding towns and even states. You know, we do a lot of parade of homes with my own company, and I bet it's, you know, one out of five people are from out of town for sure, if not more. So, I think that's drawn a lot of people to our town, and the people from out of town especially are not familiar with our streets. You know, we provide maps, but everybody's familiar, you know, with the parade of homes, with our small little orange signs. One thing that our Home Builders Association strongly believes also, that our directional signs actually increase the community safety, especially at the events where the traffic flow is essentially, you know, into cul-de-sacs or, you know, back into winding streets, you know, where you have to take several different turns to get to the house, that type of thing. You know, the HBA also appreciates you guys' efforts, and, you know, we appreciate you guys listening to what we have to say also. One thing that we're proposing to and that we already have implemented as far as our home builder, with the Home Builders Association, is that we require a sign deposit for our signs, and if you don't return them signs, you lose that deposit, which is a hundred dollars, and that surprisingly gets the signs back. And then, we also put on there, you know, for the parade of homes as it exists now, that you only have a certain amount of days that you can pick them signs up, and you only have a certain amount of days where you can return them. So, it's a fairly quick process. And overall, I guess, the HBA believes that the amendment offered is a reasonable in nature and provides a service to the public and the growth of our community, and we ask, you know, for support, including this amendment in your ordinance.
Kevin, you're president of the Home Builder.
Yes.
How long have you guys been having parade of homes? You do that twice a year, spring and fall?
We do it in the spring and the fall, and then, I think, it's been probably since nineteen sixty-two, I think, was one of our first ones.
Your program, it runs for two weeks.
It's two weekends. It's about, it's about ten days. It runs from a Saturday until the following Monday night. So, there's two Saturdays, two Sundays, and two Monday nights.
Did your organization have anybody on the sign committee? Was there-
Yes. Yes, we did.
So, you had some input at the committee level?
Yeah, Todd Nauske was. He's our man of the plan, so.
I appreciate that.
He's our, yeah, he's our government affairs guru.
I appreciate you coming down tonight. Would anyone else have any questions for Kevin? What you are presenting us is a amendment you would like to see added-
Yes.
-to the ordinance.
Amending the one-
That's currently-
That's current, yes. Yep, so.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kathy Ogde. I am the president of the Realtor Association of the Sioux Empire this year, and I too want to thank the, all of the people who worked diligently on this plan. I think it's a good plan, and it's our understanding from our, one of our members, from our executive officer, who is not able to be here tonight, actually served on the sign committee and was aware that most of this language that we, that the Home Builders just brought forward was included in the ordinance at one point in time, and that we believe it was just removed in January, as Mr. Zomer said. We really feel that the directional signs are really important to homeowners, and as an organization, we represent homeowners in a way that no other organizations do. The directional, we are also, along with the Home Builders, are willing to self-police. We understand that you cannot dictate what the content is on directional types of signs from other organizations or individuals, but we believe that we can help to police ourselves for those directional signs and would include the information that you see on the overhead at this point in time. I don't know, I am a lifelong resident of Sioux Falls. In the central area of Sioux Falls, if you have a home on, let's see, how about Coates Road? If you were trying to sell that home, how would you find that home if you didn't have GPS? The directional signs will get you there, and it wouldn't be a direct route from Twenty-Sixth. You have to go down Frederick Road and a few other places to get there. You look at the south part of town. Do you know the difference for if a house is listed on Rose Crest Trail or Rose Crest Drive or Rose Crest Court? If you were someone from out of town, new to our area, how would you know which direction to go to find the home that you are looking for? And one other, on the west side of town, can you explain easily to someone how to find Harvard Drive or Chesapeake Lane? Those, again, would not be direct off of a main thoroughfare. So, we feel that the directional signs are a benefit not only to the sellers, but also to the buyers. And as Mr. Zomer already mentioned, that in traffic areas, if you've got directional signs, at least people will be able to make those turns and notice of those turns without causing additional problems. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions for Kathy? Kathy, I think what you're saying is the Board of Realtors is in support of this particular motion for-
We are in support of the proposed amendment to the Shaped Places zoning ordinance draft.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, commissioners, Ann Sifkin, Executive Director for the South Dakota Malte Housing Association. Three of my members and myself sat on the sign committee, and language very similar to this was in the study group's documentations, and somehow, it got taken out. I can tell you that our members would have argued stringently to have this language, and we are in support of the amendment. Failing to have something that's going to regulate our boulevards, I think is going to have- to have real unintended consequences. You know, when you try to outlaw human behavior, things end up happening that you didn't think were going to happen and then you got a real mess on your hands. We've had boulevard signage around the community for, ever since I've been here in 2010. It hasn't been a problem and I'm not quite sure who thought it would be a problem and why it was taken out.
Could you give me your name again?
Dan Sifkin.
Dan?
Yes.
You served on the committee?
Yes, sir.
The day this was talked about, was it talked about at length at the committee level?
None that I was present at. As I said, I would have argued stringently because when we put up a large apartment complex, the building's done, you're paying mortgage, having to pay the mortgage, and it's 100% empty. So during those timeframes, that's when our members end up putting directional signs on the weekends for open house and things of that nature to try to generate traffic. They run radio advertising, trying to get people to come out and visit. And it's, it's going to be problematic for our entire housing industry if we don't have something that gives us some help.
As a committee member, how did you find out it was pulled out?
Well, oddly enough, Todd from Home Builders Association called me up and told me that he had had a conversation with Jeff Smith, Schmidt, and Jeff had told him that it was removed, there was a lot of opposition, and that the South Dakota Multi-Housing Association was in opposition. I immediately called Jeff and straightened the record on that. And I was then told by Jeff that it was a senior member of the government that requested it to be pulled.
Thank you for sharing some of that. Anyone else have any questions for Dan? We're still taking testimony, so we'll see what some of the other comments might end up being. Oh, excuse me, Dan.
At some point in time, I want Jeff to come back up because I have some questions on some clarification.
Absolutely. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council this evening, or commission this evening?
For the record again, George Hahn, Realtor. I'm up here as a Realtor now. This is a very simple proposal. It is low impact, short duration, greatly benefits what really is a billion dollar industry, home building, home selling, construction, thousands and thousands of jobs in those fields and finance and trades, all taxpayers, all voters. This is a very simple ordinance that regulates things in a simple manner and it costs nothing. I think this is the right way to approach this and it will be beneficial to everybody.
Thank you, George.
Hi, I'm Pam Hoferd. I work at Remax Professionals. When this ordinance was brought to my attention, I called Jeff Schmidt and talked to him about it. He's used to hearing from me. Let's just put it that way. And it was explained to me and I, I didn't write it down what he wrote, but I'll paraphrase it and I could be incorrect. But he said it's either all or nothing. And if we allow signs to be in there, that the guy with the hot dog stand will want his directional arrow for the hot dog stand so he can sell more hot dogs. And I thought, well, that makes sense. The longer I thought about it, the less that made sense to me. And the reason being is that hot dog stands are in areas that are designed for the people to go to. Stores, retail stores are designed to be in areas where they're supposed to go to. Real estate isn't designed to make it so that we can do what we do. We have three forms of letting the public know where we're at. Websites, ads, and our signs. And I mean to tell you, I've worked a lot of open houses with ever having it up on the website or ever having an ad in just off of the signs. And the public, when this goes through and the sellers find out and the buyers find out, will be a huge disservice to all of them. And it enhances the community. I mean, I've worked so many open houses with just the directional signs. I list a house Saturday night, Sunday morning I got the signs up and I'm working it. Without that availability, I have to put it up on the website and people moving here from out of town don't have access to the internet. Half the time, they can't find the ads where they're at. The other thing I wanted to point out, and maybe this is just being trivial, but the arena does have a sign pointing for the public to get there. And there are several public types of buildings that have directional signs. And I'm guessing that they're put there and allowed, you know, even though they couldn't make traffic, not be able to see, for the betterment of the public. And I guess that's the interpretation I'm trying to make you see is that we're not here defending the Realtors, we're not here just defending our buyers and our sellers, we're here defending the public and the public good of this. And you need to take my paycheck out of the equation because that's not why we put up the signs. We put up the signs to grow this community. And I think the Board of Realtors has done a wonderful job of trying to police our people. And yeah, there are people that have mistakes, but you know, that's, that's why we have jails. So. The other point I was going to make is as soon as I found out about this, I drove the downtown area and it kind of bothered me. There's three things down there that are right next to the road and they're in the boulevard area. The city decided that cement planters was important. I don't know if you've ever hit one, but I have. They do wreck your car. And they do obstruct your view. We have art in the downtown area that's in that area also and we decided that that was important enough to have it in our downtown area. I don't know how that got through. And we do have newspaper stands that are allowed in that area. So there are exceptions made all the time, they're just not talked about and that's the point. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Anyone else have a comment they'd like to make?
Hi, my name is Greg Nitzer. Just a couple of points. I didn't plan on talking about the temporary boulevard signs, but I've been following this for quite a while. Just as a private citizen, I have to say, in, I think it was draft three, I was opposed to that language and it differs appreciably from what I'm looking at right here and looking at, I've got it in front of me. In the language that was deleted, the maximum dimension shall be 40 inches high and 48 inches wide. I had a concern about the size. In this one, we see it's, the max is 24 by 24, so it's dropped appreciably. The maximum placement time shall be 21 days. The signs may be up three days before an event and must be removed two days after an event. Here I see 14 days maximum. And then there's all of these other new conditions here, at least in first blush, looking at this, it doesn't bother me a lot. My big concern, I guess, was, and I did push to have it deleted, I'll say that. My big concern was basically a change of character in the neighborhood. I was afraid it was too vague, we might start seeing a proliferation of signs, general commercial changing the character of the neighborhood. I didn't want to see signs for massage and, you know, working from home and things like that. This here, I don't generally have a problem with. So at least on first blush, I guess I'd have to think about it, but it seems very reasonable. It's limited in time and duration. Now whether it could pass constitutional muster, I guess that would be a question for the attorneys, but, so I don't have a problem with that.
Great, thank you for coming up and sharing that. I felt just exactly like you did. I thought the original language that come out was, and I'm a Realtor, I thought it was way too open-ended. I thought it would just allow any and all type of signs and that. And I thought this particular one did a much, much better job kind of tying it together and putting some.
Yeah, so if they could, you know, so what, and I have heard the comment, you have to let, you have to allow all or none. This at least specifies a specific event and it's very specific, so I, hopefully it would be applicable to everybody. The other comment I would make is I'm a current member of the zoning board of adjustment and I guess I just wanted to point out to you that we did meet on a couple of occasions with planning and zoning. We talked about the ordinance, we talked about concerns. A lot of it has been implemented. It's in the draft that you have before you today, draft four. I'll say on a personal level, I've reviewed all the drafts. At the beginning, I had over 60 concerns and that's been whittled down to four. And those four are, for the most part, policy decisions. It's kind of, there's one I have a big concern about, but the other three are frankly kind of personal preference, you know, what you want to do with fences, for example, liberalization of the fences and temporary boulevard signs was one of them, this may take care of that. And there's a few others, but I've worked with Sam and he's been great in taking input. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your work.
Thanks.
Anyone have any questions for Greg before he sits down? I guess not. Any other comments this evening? Seeing none, would you like to have Jeff come back up now? Did you have a question for Jeff?
I would as well, thank you.
Jeff, boy, your name has been talked around a lot here tonight. Imagine that.
Jeff, first of all, I'm in support of the revised amendment on the sign that they've brought forth and I'm just curious as to what the process is for you to reconsider accepting this amendment.
The process is that anything can be amended in or out by planning commissioner, city council.
Secondly, I also still have some concerns with Lanny's comments on the change in the down zone. How do we, you know, I understand that you're changing it to C2 from C4 in certain locations, but with the neighborhood meetings that have been held and the approval that we've already given to them, what is the process for him to keep it that zoning?
Same process. He can amend it in, he can amend it out through your process. So it's a little bit of misnomer where he says, I've been approved. What's he been approved for? We've stated over and over that planning commission approved, but did he build something? There's no conditional use. Conditional uses expire. He has zoning. Zoning is C4 up to 15,000 square feet with a conditional use. C2 allows 25,000 square feet. So where Lanny and I continue to go back and forth is we gave you what you have. You have C2 up to 25,000 square feet. So if he gets C4, now you've just given him unlimited. He can go out there. You give him C4, he can build a shopping mall on that site. Is that what he's been approved for? There's the challenge where if you amend it to a C3 and give him 75,000, there's going to be discussion about, whoa, wait a minute, when did he get a 75,000 square foot building here? Or in a limited size? He has the right to build a C2 facility, same as C4 right now.
Jeff, let's talk about boulevard signs in our existing sign ordinance.
Correct.
What kind of boulevard signs are allowed currently?
There are no boulevard signs allowed today at all. Signs, I think that's one of the big misunderstandings that I heard everybody coming up here today. These are not directional signs. Directional signs are still allowed, nine square feet, 50% for direction, 50% for logo on your public property, on your property. These are in the boulevard, in the public right of way. You can't do that today. You can't have signs in the public boulevard today.
But clearly, we have where it's happening and has happened for a long time. And so I think they're looking to make something permanent that has not been allowed previously in our zoning.
Correct.
So it really is a drastic change from what we have right now.
Correct. And then the biggest issue that I have, and again, Pam? Pam? Brought up, it's this first aspect where, and then Greg said, I like it this way. All the federal regulations, and we have the city attorneys here tonight, all the case courses say, and anybody from the study committee that got up and can say, I preach over and over again, content-based, content-based, you can't dictate content. The first statement that the home builders propose is, let's dictate content. You can't do it. It's illegal. You can't say, oh, by the way, we will allow garage and rummage sale signs or open house signs. Soon as Dan comes in and says, all right, so can I do a for lease sign? No. Why not? Because it doesn't say for lease, it says for sale. You can't look at content. Signs are allowed or they're not allowed. When we do freestanding signs, we say, go put up a freestanding sign, go put up a wall sign. We don't say what you can put on that sign. You can't tell them what they can, it's a First Amendment right that says you can have a sign or you can't have a sign. And by stating this, that you can only do these types of things, you're going against the First Amendment rights and we're going to lose the lawsuit.
Jeff, I also want to ask, I know that, and I can't tell you the year, that there were a lot of signs in boulevards. And at some point in time, the city decided to enforce no boulevard signs. And immediately you saw open house signs, for sale, for lease signs move back off the boulevard. I didn't see we had a huge decrease in our home sales as a result of that went action. And I think quite the contrary, you know. I totally get what you want to do as the home builders and the real estate. I get it. And I get that you got properties selling, you have a huge significant investment. But they're currently not allowed now. They're, we're selling a lot of homes. I will tell you, I've gone through these neighborhoods and I've seen 10 parade of homes signs, individual signs staked on a corner. And if I'm looking for my particular number that I want to go to, I think that's dangerous. I think there's some potential hazard with that. And I don't know how this cleans that up. I do get that you have a very large investment. I understand that some of these new developments, that the streets may not be on Google and, but the home builders, you do a great job of publicizing your events. You're on the radio, you're on TV, you have mailers, I mean, I get it in the Argus, I see them on the stands everywhere. You have a great website. You drive people to your website, your maps are on your website. I still think you have very valuable ways of getting people to your properties. And I see some value in keeping the boulevard sign ban in place and doing what we need to do on a city side to enforce it. Because I do see, you know, I don't see that it's been a tremendous downfall with how it is now. And I am, I am concerned about dictating content as well.
Jeff, I, a question. How did the committee work? This came out as a recommendation from the sign committee.
No.
Was not?
No. The sign committee recommended not to have temporary boulevard signs in. That was what was reported to planning commission, that was what was in the minutes. The sign committee did not, they wanted directional signs on private property, but not boulevard signs. And again, that's what I explained to Dan when we talked on the phone too, and I thought we were on the same page when we talked.
Am I misreading the original deal that came out on the website?
The first draft of the ordinance that we proposed came from me, where I stated content-based, signs are allowed in the boulevard. That's what Greg's referring to.
I thought that would have come from the committee.
Nope.
You just, you did that one on your own.
Yep.
At that point, you were in favor of signs in the boulevard.
Not necessarily. I got a direction to put that in there.
Then it was removed.
Correct.
Did the sign committee meet on that?
No, I just kept sending it back and forth to the sign committee through email and like, this is where we're at today, this is the new proposal, this is.
You feel, you feel there's some legal issues involved?
Significant. Again, just based on the content.
Good news is the city attorneys are here and we're, maybe we can chat with them in a couple of minutes in regards to that. Any other questions for Jeff? Jeff, thank you.
I will just note one thing. You had a page up here an hour ago that showed different study groups. And if you would notice, signage started back in 2010 and we're still not done.
September of 2010, we started signage. September of 2010, we started Sign Committee. We met every two weeks, and we have minutes on the website.
It's a tough one.
We have minutes on the website for all the agendas, all the minutes, all the PowerPoint presentations, and it says on there, "We weren't doing directional signs."
You know, they haven't been legal. They haven't been legal since the last zoning ordinance, but it happens. You can drive around this weekend, and guess what you're going to see? And I think what I've been hearing is, hey, I'll pick on the home builders, hey, we'd just not as soon deliberately go out and break the law? Can we get a comfort range for having directional signs in the parking? And I think that's kind of the debate. Now, we might say no. They might put their directional signs up anyway. And I think then it comes down to a question about, well, okay, what's the enforcement?
Right.
And I, and I, I think they're trying to find a reasonable way, and maybe it includes seeing open house for rentals. I think they're kind of open to what would feel comfortable here that everybody could support. That's all I can say. City Attorney, would you mind, oh, hello, how are you? Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
You've been listening to the conversation?
I have, Mr. --
You had a chance to look at this draft that they would like to have included?
Yes, and Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I am familiar with this issue, certainly been researching this issue in terms of what can be allowed sign-wise. There's a lot of case law out there dealing with sign ordinances and how they're handled. From a policy perspective, it is certainly up to Planning and zoning and the City Council whether or not to allow signs in the boulevard. Municipalities that have chosen to remove them have generally used the argument that it's for public safety reasons or aesthetic reasons, and those reasons have generally been upheld by the courts for reasons not to allow signs in the right-of-way. But a municipality can certainly choose to have signs or not have signs in the right-of-way. But the problem comes when you make a decision about what signs can be there based upon content. And that's when you run into First Amendment implications, and that's where you have problems. If you say that signs that say certain things, like real estate for sale, open house, a parade of homes are allowed, but signs that say, you know, massage parlor, working from home, you know, those kind of things are not allowed, you run into First Amendment problems because you are judging the sign not by the public safety, not by the aesthetics for the community, but you are judging it by the content of the sign. Generally, when you read the case law, what you find is that if a code enforcement official can walk up to a sign and pull it out and make a decision based upon the size of the sign, because it's too big, or larger than what is allowed by ordinance, or the fact that it's there, you are in good shape. When a code official has to actually read the sign to determine what it says, then you're into a content-based statute, or a content-based ordinance, and that is where you run into First Amendment problems. So, if the decision is made that all boulevard signs of a certain size can be had in the boulevard, I certainly think that that decision can be made, or no boulevard signs allowed, that that decision can be made. But what cannot happen, what we believe is illegal and contrary to the First Amendment, is if we determine what signs are appropriate in the boulevard based upon the content of those signs.
I think I understand it. Well, the thought is, if you allow an open house sign, you have to allow all signs.
Yeah, and you know, it was, you know, it was expressed earlier, all or nothing, and that pretty well summarizes what we believe needs to be done legally. Because if you, not to every extent, because you can certainly limit the size of a sign and those kind of things, but once you start basing that sign on the content of the sign, that's when you run afoul of the First Amendment.
What is the penalty right now if somebody makes a complaint and they get a citation for putting a sign in the boulevard?
Sure.
All sorts of stories about that, and I'm curious what it actually is.
Couple of different options that the city would have from an enforcement perspective. First, we could issue citations. Those would start out as a hundred dollars, then they move to two hundred dollars or three hundred dollars. The other thing is, since it's a violation of a city ordinance, we can always bring a criminal complaint in magistrate court where the fine would be up to five hundred dollars.
Question, is that per sign or per individual? The citation-wise?
We could certainly, we could pursue it per sign. I think that those decisions would need to be made if they're pursued, but it would be my belief that we could, if there were ten signs, that we could have ten different violations.
Okay, and it wouldn't be necessarily the same instance if it was over the course of three weeks, and there were three open houses, and there were three signs, it would be one for every?
Correct. The city would have the ability to pursue that as an enforcement perspective, either under citations or criminal complaint. Currently boulevard signs aren't allowed in the city of Sioux Falls, and what is proposed by staff would be consistent with the current rules in the city.
Well, we hear of other communities that are allowing it by ordinance. Did they somewhere look at this differently, or?
There are certainly communities that if you look at their sign ordinances, there are, there are communities that I think do base, you know, from my opinion, base some of their ordinances on content. However, there's always issues about whether those laws have been challenged, and if challenged, have they been sustained? One example of a sign ordinance, and I think it kind of sets forth what the problems are when you base it on content. One, and I don't remember the specific municipality or state that this was involved in, but somebody was unhappy with a certain city and wrote a big sign on the site of their house that said, "Screwed by the city of blank," okay? Well, in their particular sign ordinance, they did have an exemption that said you could have holiday signs in your yard. So part of the discussion that the court had was, well, even though that language isn't appropriate, maybe if that person changed their sign to "Scrooged by the city of," would that be considered a holiday sign? And then therefore, would it be appropriate based upon content? So when you start basing your laws on content, you run into all sorts of First Amendment implications and problems that courts will sort out, and they don't always sort them out to the benefit of the city.
We've had the three organizations that have done a lot of work in this town, the home builders, the Realtors, and the rental association. Based on what you're telling us, what advice would you give them in regards to this particular issue that I feel is important to them?
I guess from, you know, from a policy perspective, that's not the issue that I'm here on. That's not a decision that we make from a legal standpoint. You know, if this stays as being an ordinance that does not allow signs in the boulevard, there are certainly options under the current proposal to place signs on private property in terms of, you know, landowners can certainly make decisions about what if any signs go in their yard pursuant to the way that it's set. I certainly am not going to get into what the proper way to market an open house is or anything like that, because that's not an area of expertise for me. I would merely say that I think if the city makes the decision to base its signs on the content of those signs, and the type of signs that somebody puts in the yard, rather than the size of the sign, or allowing or not allowing a sign, that it is going to cause the city problems from a First Amendment standpoint if somebody challenges that law.
So their position would be all signs or no signs, pretty much?
To some extent. I mean, you know, that oversimplifies it to some extent, because you can certainly determine the appropriate size. If there are line of side issues, public safety issues, you can certainly determine what is an appropriate size of a sign to be in a yard. But in terms of, if you base it on content, that I think is where you are going in violation of the First Amendment. If you are allowing signs for a purpose of real estate or parade of homes, then I think you're also allowing signs for, you know, other things that, you know, whether people find this a good thing or not, for, you know, working from home signs, or massage signs, or a couple of signs that were brought up as examples tonight, or eat at this restaurant, or those kind of things. If you start basing the decision on content, that's where the problem lies.
Thank you. Another question?
Yeah, what is the, so the process, say we approve this, and they can put boulevard signs out, somebody else comes and says, "I want to put, you know, buy my hot dog signs out." If we don't approve that, then we're, we in theory could have a lawsuit brought against the city for, and how, I mean, process for all that sort of thing.
If you approve the amendment that's before you, that says garage, or rummage sale, or open house signs, and you limit to a certain type of sign that's in the yard, I think the city is at real risk of losing an argument for, under First Amendment implications, for basing our sign ordinance on content.
And, I mean, what's the cost of going through something like that?
You know, that, in terms of how much money would the city lose in a lawsuit? That would be speculation. Certainly, somebody could come forward and claim damages, and I, the sky's the limit. I couldn't give you a number.
Thanks.
As a municipality showing direction signs to the pavilion, to the airport, that obviously cannot, can't be an issue for the city doing something like that.
Yeah, any individual sign that's out there, that there's some concern about whether that violates, I think we'd need to look at that on an individual basis. I don't want to, I don't want to make any blanket statements. Need to see the sign we're talking about, where it's located, those type of issues.
Thank you.
You could revise the amendment that's before us, though, and remove that restrictive content, and then it would be, I guess, less at risk as for a lawsuit, correct?
From a legal standpoint, yeah. And I'm sorry, but from a legal standpoint, it's a policy decision about whether to allow the signs or not. Certainly, I think that this body or the City Council could determine that it's going to allow signs in the boulevard of a certain size, just generally.
For a certain timeframe, just in, leave it more generalized.
Legally, that decision could be made. But once you start determining that signs can be put out for this reason and not this reason, and we get to content, that's where the problem is.
Okay.
Paul, thank you.
All right, thank you.
We've had a heck of a discussion tonight. I haven't closed it to public. One more, and that's it, and then I'm going to close it for public input.
My name is Ike McDonald. I've been in real estate for thirty-eight years, and I've watched open house signs long before I got in real estate, and they've been all over the city. There have been no problems. I haven't seen any massage parlor signs come up, because there's real estate signs up. Where did this issue start? Now, they're talking about the content. Real estate signs have been up forever. Nobody's copied this and stuck out a massage parlor sign or a hot dog sign. We've got a couple of guys down the street swinging their butts around like this with pizza signs and stuff. Is that a problem too? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ike, appreciate that. That being said, we're going to close the meeting, any further public comment. And having said that, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, for the sake of discussion, I'd make the motion to approve the ordinance.
I have a motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second, it's time for discussion.
Mr. Chair, we've had a lot of discussion before we had a motion, but I just don't feel comfortable opening this up again. If we've had a sign ordinance that prohibited boulevard or right-of-way signs, I'd just as soon stay with that going forward. I don't, I understand what the attorneys are saying about content, but at the same time, I think this is an issue that, as the city grows, could become a much bigger problem going forward. And I don't know how that happens, but I've lived in bigger cities where this is a big issue in terms of the massage and every other entity that wants to put a sign, puts them out on the boulevard, and oftentimes, they're not removed, so.
And I understand, you know, this is something that hasn't been allowed previously, and it isn't changing necessarily, but I also, you know, question the enforceability of it. It's a challenge to do that, but I understand where they're coming from, and, you know, if there was a revised amendment before us, I think that would be something that we should consider. And I don't know how much more to say it, I guess, than that. If the content part of it was out of there, maybe reconsider a revised amendment.
Mr. Chair, Andy, in response to the enforcement, this would be enforced just like any other component of the zoning ordinance, and typically, that's by citizen complaint.
Andy, thank you for those comments. Anybody else? Nick, Steve, you guys, what are you guys thinking?
Chair, I have to agree with Meredith, and the city attorneys, that I think the risk out there, when you start down the slope, gets pretty slippery. And all or none kind of decision, I think, is what needs to be made. And again, agreeing with Meredith, I think none is kind of the best option, at least for now.
Steve, what do you think?
Well, I'm going to echo Meredith and Nick also on this. Again, there are, I wrote some notes. Jeff, when he came up and said, "First Amendment," the light did finally click on and say, "Oh, yes. I want to put up that hot dog sign." It's not in there. I'm going to come to the city and say, "I want to put up my hot dog sign." They say, "No, why not?" Because you're a hot dog salesman, you're not selling real estate. Just not allow it. I have a right, First Amendment right. And like I said, when Jeff finally mentioned that First Amendment, because I wasn't really agreeing with his all or none, until he said that, and I, oh, makes a big difference. So, as Meredith said, and Nick, it's a pretty slippery slope here we could be entering ourselves on if we put this amendment in. And there already is, we do not allow them right now. So there's really no change in the ordinance. We would be changing it if we did add it, so.
Thank you for those comments. Darla, do you have anything you want to?
Yeah, I'm in agreement on that as well. It's, there's, it's not allowed at this time, and I'm uncomfortable with the wording of the amendment after hearing the attorney tonight, so.
Jesse, did you have anything further you wanted to add?
I don't, Kenny, thank you.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor is signified by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed?
No.
Thank you. Motion passes. We will now go to item number seven.
Item number seven. Do you want to wait a little bit?
Why don't you wait just a second here and quiet down a little bit? We had a couple of counselors.
Now forth all the exciting items on the agenda. Almost forgot what we had them.
What in the world is this item number seven, Jeff?
Item number seven is an amendment to the subdivision ordinance. The subdivision ordinance is another implementation tool for the city of Sioux Falls and the Planning Commission. The purpose of the subdivision ordinance is to address deficiencies within
The purpose of the subdivision ordinance is to address deficiencies within the existing ordinance. Subdivisions is the division or re-subdivision of land to two or more lots. This land historically has been required as an assurance agreement between the applicant and the city to complete public requirements. What we're trying to do with this ordinance is, right now, when they come in from a subdivision standpoint, they may want to build only a half of a street or a portion of a street on a back lot, and we're requiring financial securities with that subdivision so that we know that project's going to get completed in the end. So we're putting that statement in the subdivision ordinance.
I think what we're talking about is where there's two neighbors, one wants to build the road and one doesn't.
Yep, and one's maybe just not ready to develop yet, that developer can proceed forward.
So you guys will say, "Hey, we'll wait till you both want to, but you don't want a plat next to this."
You have those options. You cannot build it at all, you can build half of it and securitize the other. We just want to know it's financially going to be completed when it's required.
Thank you.
Yes.
So does that developer have to bond the entire project, or is it just?
Their half.
Just the cost of the road, I believe.
Yes.
But, okay, just the cost of the road.
Correct. Yep. It allows that developer to proceed forth their project versus they'd get to it and they'd go, "But the developer to the west isn't proceeding, they don't want to do the project." And we'd go, "Then you can't proceed at all either." And they go, "I can't do the project at all." No, you can proceed, but financially securitize that project. It gives them an option to proceed forward.
So it still is for some of the smaller developers?
An option.
An option to, and financially be able to bond that?
Yes.
Because it isn't the entire, okay.
Any other questions, Jeff? Chair would entertain a motion on item number seven.
I'll make a motion to approve item number seven.
We have a motion, would there be a second?
Second.
Have audience participation in this one, if there was anybody or not?
Oh, was there anyone that wanted to address item number seven? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number eight, Jeff.
Number eight is a change to the stormwater drainage system ordinance. This eight, nine, and ten, but we'll start with eight, they all have to do with the new shaped places that you have just adopted and moving forward to city council. Steve, if you bring up the table, all of the zoning classifications will now be changed. It's not changing in the storm drainage, the fee structure, but it's changing the classification of the zoning. So as you can see in this table, the current zoning on the left and the proposed zoning in shape Sioux Falls, we're making the zoning consistent with the new ordinance as it proceeds forward. So that needs to be in the new storm drainage fees also.
Thank you. Would there be any questions for Jeff regarding number eight? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address item number eight? Seeing none, chair would entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd make the motion to approve item eight.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes. Yes.
Item eight is passed.
For item number nine, it has to do with the streets and the street plating fees. Again, just like stormwater, when you plant property, you do the subdivision of land, you get charged a plating fee. The fees aren't being changed, but the classification for how much you pay based upon your zoning is being changed. Because again, shaped places has changed the zoning classification. The ones I'd like to highlight again are RS1 and RS2 is the current zoning classification. In the future, it's just me RS. The other one that's nice and easy to look at is RC, Recreation Conservation. In the future, it will be either REC, Recreation, or it will be CN, Conservation. They're not lumped together. So that will be easier to understand as you move forward.
Would there be any questions for Jeff on item number nine? Anyone in the audience like to address item number nine? Seeing none? Anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make motion to approve item number nine. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor will signify by saying yes.
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 All opposed? Andy, did you oppose that?
No, I tried to get it in.
Motion passes.
Item number 10 is the plating fees for water distribution. Again, same premise, same philosophy. When you develop land, you plat land, there's fees associated with the water distribution system, the trunk lines for water. And we want to make sure that the new zoning ordinances, the classifications for those are consistent in this ordinance also.
Is this where we can make a motion to do away with plating fees, Jeff?
You can make that motion, yes. I would highly go against that, but...
As chair, I can't make a motion. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I will, to approved item number 10.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, planning commissioners.
Move to adjourn. We have a motion to adjourn. Second.
Second.
All in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
We're adjourned. Thank you.